We call this meeting to order. This meeting and all meetings of this council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with the Wisconsin statute so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda. Roll call.
Shane Appleby?
Here.
Bruce Brunner?
Here.
Nick Gunnarson?
Here.
Mike Kemp?
Here.
Keith Nadolsky?
Here.
Scott Rasserson?
Here.
All present.
Okay, will you join us in a pledge of allegiance? Let me mic him, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, approve the agenda. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried, thank you. May we entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the last regular meeting of February 15th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 15th.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, approve the minutes from February 15th. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried, thank you. Citizens' appearance, Frank, you have the floor.
Thank you. Not much to report. We have a meeting tonight and basically it's the after-winter projects to take care of, a broken light out in front and items that need to be taken care of. The other thing is, I mentioned at the last meeting, that we're going to be contacting a contractor and/or an architect about the expansion on the library there. So, we're in the process now, we're dealing with owls. They have people and they have architects throughout the state, so hopefully we will get something in the works. We're not looking to build yet, so don't go that direction, but we are looking ahead because it's something that we're going to need to do. We're running short on space, particularly in the area where the computers are. They are being used and used and used. And if you ever go in there after school, you'll know what I'm talking about. The adults have a hard time getting on the computers because they're always being used. So, we're looking at that, that's something that the future holds right now. Other than that, and I did talk to the chief, and I don't think I'm talking out of line, we have a problem with one young man that we need to keep an eye on. And we told the gals today that they don't need to be afraid because we have the cameras and they noticed there's somebody out the back door sort of waiting at eight o'clock at night, and that's not a situation I want to put those young ladies in. So, I said just back in, call the police, and have them escorted away from there because the back door is not where we want them. So, we had quite a discussion on that, and I think we're all set. And like I said, I talked to the chief, and he knows the problem, we'll get it taken care of, okay? Other than that, if you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Frank.
Thanks.
Next, Kaline McCoy, welcome. You have the floor.
Hi, thank you, I'm Kaline McCoy, and thank you for letting me introduce myself. I'm currently the clerk of the town of Lynn, have been for 10 years, and as you're aware, Mary Robins is not seeking reelection for county clerk. It has been my passion to serve the community. Within the commitment I have as clerk will result in being an asset to the Wapaka County clerk office and the job it entails. Through continued education and experience, I have developed quality leadership skills that would prove beneficial to the key role of county clerk. I maintain and continue to advance my communication skills, being able to handle conflict, adversity in a confident and rational manner. These are qualities that are needed in serving Wapaka County's six cities, six villages, 22 townships, and governed by 27 county board supervisors. By completing the Clerks Institute at the University of Green Bay, I am now a certified municipal clerk. I have attended Leadership Wapaka County Course, which was designed to develop leaders for today and tomorrow. I feel confident that my continuing education experiences and accomplishments will allow for a positive working relationship with the Wapaka County's municipalities and the Wapaka County Board of Supervisors. I am currently serving on the Board of Directors for Wisconsin Municipal Clerks Association as treasurer and have been past district co-director for Unit 7. I'm also chair of the Wisconsin Towns Association, Wapaka Unit, and also served as past secretary treasurer. I am looking for your support and working with you in many challenges ahead. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move to number six, Public Works. Bruce Brunner, you have the floor.
I'd like to first recommend approval of A-15 pay request number nine for $623,491.65 contingent on receipt of lien waivers.
Have we got the lien waivers or?
We don't, actually, we're behind on Myron. We're behind two payments at least, so we're sitting on about $1.2 million. We released one. And again, you know, when we've talked about these lien waivers, it's last month's pay request, the lien waivers are that all their subcontractors have been paid from last month's. There's something with the way Myron contracted with one of their subcontractors, and Seager as the construction administrator has been looking to make sure that 100% of what the subcontractor put in was paid, and to my knowledge, and I'm going off the top of my head on this, but to my knowledge, there's something of a retainage issue there where not all of it gets paid right away between Myron and one of their subs. But, that's off the top of my head here real quick, too. But, we're sitting on two months' worth, so again, I think every month I tell you that contingency on the lien waivers is important, though it is. So, and really what we're looking for is to make sure we don't get to the end of the project. We've paid all of our bills, but a sub might have a lien on our property even though we've paid all the bills. So, that's really, it's more of a check and balance. And it's not an issue, I mean, Myron's not doing this on purpose, it's just procedurally, this is just what's, there's a little bit of a lag on their end, or in the process, I should say.
Okay, any motion on that?
There's a motion I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, approve Section 1 of A-15 pay request. Any more questions? Any objections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried, thank you. Next one.
Second, I'd like to recommend, make a motion, approval of A-16 Schedule A parking lot base bid without colored concrete.
Okay, that's the one we discussed last time. Yeah, motion?
I'll second it. You made a motion? Okay.
Motion made and seconded, approves the concrete work or the blacktop work in the parking lot. All in favor say aye.
No, this is, this, hang on. So, the base bid includes decorative lighting, so we had an alternate to take the lighting out because there are three lights that are in the parking lot now. What the committee recommended was that we put in two decorative light poles, and I believe the thought, if I speak a little before the committee, was that if you don't put them in now, you're probably not putting them in.
And they're gonna have the others, too.
And the lighting, all the bidders had used the exact same supplier, and all of the bids on the lighting were to a penny the same for everybody. So, it was really, do you want the lighting or not? By approving the base bid, you're putting the lighting in. In the base bid, there was colored concrete, which I believe Thad had said we're looking at somewhere in the $700-$800 range to color that concrete in the middle, in the raised section where the lights would be. The thought here was that we could back out that coloring and just put in a regular concrete, so it would just be regular concrete colored in the middle for some savings. But, what we're looking at with the parking lot then would be the base bid, just taking out the colored part of the concrete.
I thought I remembered more of a price than $700-$800.
Yeah, I think it was like three grand, actually.
I thought it was like $1,900.
Yeah, it was quite a bit more.
Nineteen hundred to $2,000.
I was thinking it was.
It was significant enough where we figured the color didn't matter.
I'm sorry, I'm, I apologize.
Yeah, it was quite a bit more than that, but.
And the lights are LED ones as well that are in there, so.
Yep.
The last and.
Any other questions?
So, now, just one clarification is, we don't know who the low bidder is going to be because it's either Summers out of Shaiaktan or Vinton, which I believe is out of, it's out there on the lake shore. But, it's going to come down to the additional paving work in the backyards here and the West Main Street sidewalk. So, we may not know yet who the low bidder is. What we're gonna look at is just schedule by schedule, which, what work you'd like to get completed. Does that make sense? It's close. It's close between the two.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Seconded.
I did.
Motion carried.
Okay, we're on number three, I believe. I'd like to make a motion to approve A-16 Schedule B West Main Street sidewalk with further discussion with property owner on retaining, on the retaining wall option and potential cost share.
All right, any, I gotta explain that, I think you all know where we're talking.
I'll second it.
To put that in, we're gonna, if the retaining wall has to go in, we're gonna split the cost with the homeowner.
Potentially.
And between Patrick and I, we've been trying to catch them the last few days and haven't talked to them, but I guess basically what we're gonna do is.
This is just, this is just for the grading.
Just for the straight grading, right. And if they agree to go with the wall, retaining wall, then it'll be the, I think it was $6,000, and it's 50/50.
Well, we hope, we hope.
Yeah.
That's, so the clerks is who we're talking about. When Thad and I met with them on-site last year, they had preferred a retaining wall and offered that they'd be interested maybe in paying 50%, but that's without knowing any costs. So, the base bid is roughly $15,000 for sidewalk, to extend it all the way to the lake shore, and then it would put a concrete pad landing on the other side. Now, when we talked with OCS, they weren't interested in having sidewalk or a trail there, so the sidewalk would end at a pad, and then it would be grass. But, roughly $15,000 includes grading, which would grade back probably 2/3 of the way to their house for the clerks. So, it'd be for every four feet, we'd rise up a foot. If you see that, it's a big mound. The sidewalk itself has to be within an inch of the curb line, so we have, we have a ways to go to get up. They did mention that they weren't all that interested, or you know, if they, if we could get away from the grading. This is last year, we talked to them, that they'd like a retaining wall. The retaining wall is $6,000. We've dropped the line a couple times, haven't heard for sure if there would be a cost share. So, the question, I guess, would be here, would you be interested in doing this sidewalk? Now, again, it's TID eligible, because when we put together the TIF district for the gas station, the sidewalk itself and the roadway were going to be eligible expenses. So, in essence, the new taxes from that development are going to fund, hopefully, enough that it would pay for our share of the roadway, which is already done, and if you wanted to do the sidewalk, we'd be, TIF money would go towards paying for that. So, the first thing would be, do you want to do the sidewalk? And it's about a house and a half that you need to complete, $15,000. And then, number two, if you want to do it, would you be interested in adding the $6,000 on there? And I can tell you that as of today, we, I haven't heard for sure if the homeowner prefers a retaining wall and would like to pay for it, we really haven't heard.
So, if there's no retaining wall, we have to grade it, right?
Correct.
At our cost.
Yes, and we would need a temporary.
That's part of the $15,000.
It's part of the $15,000. We would just need a temporary easement from them to be able to grade, and then we would insulate their water service because they used to have issues with freezing until we fixed the roadway. Now, we would just insulate to make sure their private service doesn't freeze. But, it cuts quite a bit, I think we've got to come up about 3 and 1/2 feet, and you figure every four feet, we can rise one, I mean, it gets all the way almost to their front door.
Right.
And they had preferred, she had preferred that if we could put in a retaining wall, that would be a good thing. This, last fall, we looked at this, and we had an estimate for about $15,000 to do the sidewalk, and I think the committee at the time decided they didn't want to do that at that price. Now, we bid it out, we have the same price, but the difference is that now we have it included in a TIF district.
I think part of it, too, is we held it because we knew we had the projects going this year.
Yeah, well, yeah. Trying to get a better price, too.
So, we're hoping to. Hoping it would benefit us, but.
The sidewalk's pretty necessary to get across to the new development there with subway and the gas station, right? Because there's no.
I think it's, for the kids to get the subway, I think it's a necessity.
Yeah, there's no real safety, otherwise.
Right. Yeah, I think we have to do it.
Okay, did I motion on that?
We have a motion, we'll second.
One of the things you could do is to leave this contingency. If you want to approve this section, that's one thing. If you want to have it contingent on working something out with the property owner, and if you think 50/50 is a fair split, that's something we could try to get. You know, either way, we gotta work with the property owner, either to get a split on a wall, if that's what you'd like, or maybe the city considers paying for the whole thing.
I guess ultimately, I'd like to see a wall, just because it would look a lot better.
Yeah.
But, I would like to see them at least.
I walked down there about four times today, walked around, I walked around, and it's, man, if we cut that baby back, this.
No, it's.
Front porch.
It'd be the, it'd be the right thing to do, but I'd like to at least see some type of share.
Yeah.
But, that's not, that's not even important right now. If you read what this says right here, this is for approval of the Schedule B West Main Street sidewalk.
And the potential.
Which we'll take care of, with further discussion. That's all that is, is discussion. We can go, we can go ahead and make the motion, second it, and run it through because you still have to discuss it. Whether or not you get 50% share is after, after the fact here.
I would ask which option you'd like to go with, and the reason I say that is because we put this pretty tight with, because we added this into the parking lot. We have to look at the timing on the parking lot for City Hall, and that would be lined up to go April 25th, where the crews are on-site. So, in between there, we need about a two to three week notice. So, we don't need a decision tonight, but within a week, we'd have to know if there's a cost share, because the timing is gonna be pretty tight on awarding. And again, I'll tell you, the way you go on this sidewalk, if you choose a retaining wall, it's one contractor, if you go the other way, it's gonna be the other contractor. So, that's why the focus, I think, is probably more appropriately on how do you do it, and then you'll figure out, so who is the low bidder then, between Summers and Vinton?
All right, so, my opinion, this sidewalk is being put in at our request, not the homeowners. We're generating it, we should pay for the retaining wall. Putting it in TIF district is just that simple. They didn't request it, we're putting it on their property, therefore, we should do it, as long as it's in the TIF.
It's our fault they're doing it, and we're doing it.
It's by our request. We're generating it.
Truthfully, I agree. Good point.
I agree, too.
Okay.
All right, don't you want that rephrased?
You'd have to.
Oh, yeah, and I've gotta look at the way they've got it, if it's.
Do the sidewalk, including the retaining wall?
Yep.
Okay. Everybody happy with that?
No, either way.
Take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
I don't think it's.
Aye.
Post.
I don't think it's not the right thing to do. I guess is a good way to put it.
Right.
We could still talk to them, but.
Yeah.
Next one.
Okay, number four, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of A-16 Schedule C West Main Street manhole repairs.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, repair, the manhole rings, and I think you all know what they are, they're all the big bumps in the road that we gotta get taken care of. Any questions on it?
It came in cheaper than we thought.
Came in a lot cheaper than what we thought.
There you go.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried, thank you.
Do we have, who made the motion and the second?
Bruce made the motion, I made the second.
Thank you.
Okay, then, number five, I'd like to make a motion, approval of A-16 Schedule D sidewalk repairs on East Elfrid Street.
Second.
All right, that's pretty obvious, the sidewalk down there is buckling all over the place, we gotta get it fixed before somebody gets hurt.
Do you have any contact with the county yet?
We have not, but essentially, what the word is, is that if we go repair it, we just have to submit it to the county then, on a reimbursement or on the cost share, what we have. It's on either, I think, what is it, on either side of the wellhouse?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions? Take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carried, thank you.
The only, only other item that we have with the parking lot is the fact that we had bid out for private paving work, and there were some questions on whether or not any property owners on Main, or on Main Street here would look to do some paving. Now, the thought is, we only did asphalt as a option for homeowner, or for property owners. When you look back at the Brew House, the Maytag, right behind here, behind Dave Worth's office, there's a concrete pad and a very small amount of asphalt between the parking lot and their properties. So, there's not a whole lot of asphalt to be done there, but we also had an option to quote out a manual asphalt removal and replace between the Maytag and Dave Worth's office. That quote came in at about $3,100, and we had asked Mr. Worth and Mr. Newman if $3,100 for that alleyway was gonna be acceptable. The only one we got back from was Mr. Newman, who owns 10 feet out of the 12. He said he would be interested in that and paying his share. He said, you know, Dave Worth, I think, has two feet along his building. We didn't hear back on his interest, but what Mr. Newman had asked is, if he would agree to do the alleyway, would the city be interested in a cost share? And what I had indicated to him was that if there was a cost share to be considered, right now, it's a private alleyway. I think people probably use it in a public manner, but one of the fears, I think, that we had at a public info meeting and even at the committee was, if the city would invest any money in cleaning that up, because it's private property, it could be closed off, too. So, any thought on any funding for that? The city would probably want to make sure that that's open for access, if that's something you wanted to look at. But, for right now, the quote we have on that is about $3,100. The majority property owner said he'd be interested, and he also asked if the city would be interested in assistance on that. So, that's one of the bid items, that it would have to be determined whether or not that would be done. Sounds like the prop, one of the property owners would like it to be done. The other part on the additional paving, while the business owners on Main Street probably don't have a whole lot of asphalt, the bank, where they have those holes in their parking lot, where it looks like they were probably gonna try to finish that, Dan Connect asked if, when we're paving, we may consider paving over those to get those flat, and we do need to ask for some property to be deeded over to the city, and there's a chance that we may be able to work something out there. Either they pay for the asphalt, or maybe the asphalt is part of the payment to pick up. There's a section of the green space, about 1/8 of one of the parking stalls for the reserved parking is technically on the bank's property. That gravel, the lion's twiggles, where the city owns a lot of it and the bank owns some, we'd like to own all of the gravel. So, with additional paving, you know, the big thing would be with the Newmans, if that's what they want to go forward with. I guess with the council, it's private work, but we had agreed that we would try to get a rate for that with our contract. If you want to allow them to get the work done, if they pay for it, I mean, that's a motion you could make. I'm sorry, I don't have a whole lot of info on that, but we've got the info on Mr. Newman's interest.
She can't do the whole alley until Mr. Worth puts his two cents worth in, right?
I think.
Is that something you need now, because it's not on their agenda? Is this?
Right, well, we didn't, we didn't have any action on it, it's just part of what we had bid out, so.
You're not looking for an answer tonight, are you?
We don't, I don't know that we have enough info. I'm just kinda throwing that info out, this is what we've got, you know.
Okay.
I mean, I guess since the city would benefit, though, if we were looking at it as a cost share, we could discuss that.
No, it can't, it's not even on here. I think.
At a later date. I'm just saying that they had asked for that, but you don't have any of the voting on that.
Right, no.
But, they have asked for it anyway.
Okay.
Unofficially to me, so.
Unofficially.
Yeah, yeah. So, other than that, I think on all these schedules that we had on the agenda, though, you've all voted on them?
Yep.
Okay. I just want to let you know that there's some alternates that are still sort of out there, but it's private work, it's not really up to us, other than the fact that it would be part of the contract. Okay?
Okay.
All right.
Go ahead.
We're on number six.
One quick one.
Just start anywhere.
One quick one.
I'd also like to make a motion, approval of draft CIP plan.
Second. I second that.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded, draft the CIP plan. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
And last.
Motion carried.
And lastly, I'd like to make a motion, approval of TNC Services LLC for Spring Street sweeping quote of $4,550.
Second.
Second. Teddy, do you?
Yep.
You wanna give us a little what you're gonna do, or what the proposal is?
Go along the curb and sweep up the curb and any intersections that have sand in it, and any place that would have debris and sand in the roads, and is all the construction done down here on, is that Mill?
No. No.
From the. One of the, one of the things we've had is, we've had, we've been on Myron to clean that up, a lot better, and they've been out because they're doing the AgroCure project and our project, too. The problem is now that the snow and everything's out, now all the mud and everything's left there, but they've been through quite often. I know that's one of the problems that Ted ran into last year was.
It was.
Heavy, heavy debris on the road, and a lot of it's because of this dirt that they're driving out of.
Get it all cleaned up, and next day, it was all back to where it was again.
What's your schedule? When do you hope to get here?
I'm probably looking at end of April.
The end of April?
Yeah, somewhere right in there. It might even be before that.
I was gonna say, it'd be nice if you do it before that, but.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get it.
We've got people asking about it already.
But now with the snowstorm coming again, now.
Yeah, that snow might scoop it up again.
Tomorrow, maybe?
I'm putting a new fan in, so.
And then, the recommendation from the committee was for the spring street sweeping, and in speaking with Ted, the issue that's always come up in the fall is the fact that the city doesn't do a leaf pickup, and so in thinking about ways we might be able to offer that and get leaves off of the streets so that when he's street sweeping, he's not leaf sweeping, he had mentioned that he might have a, a potential solution, and right now, we said we'd look at spring street sweeping, and he may be getting us some kind of a solution to consider for a, a leaf collection of some type.
That would be nice.
Yeah, the one, one street, it took me over an hour just to go one block, and I had, I had piles of leaves like this, and it just, it doesn't work. I just, sorry, Pat, and talked to Mike at that time, and it's not gonna work. Those old trees really layin' down.
Anybody got any questions for Ted, long as you got him here? You're gonna do it, hopefully, a little bit before the end of April, as soon as possible.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go to Finance Committee, Keith.
Alright. Make a motion to approve C-15 pay request number eight to Immel for two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-two-hundred-two dollars and seven cents.
I'll second.
Uh, this one, there is no contingency for lien waivers, because they came in three weeks early on this one. Caught us a little bit by surprise. That's a good thing. So, this one, you do not need that contingency.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried, thanks.
Alright, next I'll make a motion to approve the C-15 owner-direct purchases pay request for one-hundred-and-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and seventy-two cents.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, seconded, approve it, everybody knows what that is, right?
We're heavy on steel and stone for the big amount this time.
We can, Bruce, and we can, the material's going in there, if the city buys it themselves, we don't pay sales tax. So, that's, we buy the material, but they take care of it, they'll do it for us, so. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
Alright, next I'll make a motion to approve or to purchase community room chairs, tables, and carts from the Websterant store.
That's what we just talked about upstairs there.
Yeah, you've got a, just a quick rundown with shipping on that, so we're looking at sixteen bowl mold eight-foot tables, the plastic tables that you had at the library. A hundred-and-twenty stackable chairs with a two-inch cushion on them. One, uh, flat table cart, so the tables will lay flat, you can get all sixteen of them on that cart. Two chair dollars, so when you're stacking chairs in the community room and council chambers, you can wheel them around, and I think you can wheel them around, so I'll put them high. We have two ta, two chair carts, one in each room, one table cart that we would float around. And then sixteen tables, a hundred-and-twenty chairs, and that will outfit for the lowest price the community room, which will seat eighty, and the upstairs meeting rooms. Now, that total includes shipping on there. And I've got just a quick rundown. I think it comes into about forty-three-hundred dollars, just under that. Uh, forty-two-hundred-ninety-three dollars fifty-nine cents. The next low for comparable was Costco. In Costco, you had to buy the twenty-one pack of tables, a hundred-and-twenty chairs, and that came in at five grand alone, without any carts. So, we're looking at, uh, sixty-one dollars per table for sixteen tables, fifteen dollars fifty-nine cents per chair for a hundred-and-twenty chairs. And I believe that's about a ten-to-fifteen day ship, so we've got, I mean, a little bit of time on that, but...
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Oh, we had a second.
Who's second?
Shani?
No.
No, I don't think I did. I'll second it, though.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was on the other one, I think, the direct purchases.
In your packet, you have just a quick top sheet on each one of those products, then, too.
Now we do all in favor. We got a motion to second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, post. Alright, Bruce, next one.
No, I got it. Next, we'll make a, I'll make a motion to, uh, purchase the office chairs from Office Outfitters of Wapaka. And that has, what was it, twenty percent discount?
Yeah, so it's the three chairs that are over here are three of the samples. They come in on their own at the cheapest compared to Brothers, EBI, all the different companies that we quoted our chairs from. They run about a hundred-and-forty to a hundred-and-eighty dollars, and if you buy eighteen-hundred dollars in chairs, Office Outfitters will cut twenty percent off of that. So, it will get our chairs down to about a hundred-and-thirty to a hundred-and-fifty, a hundred-and-sixty. And we will buy, the thought is that we'll go for offices. The council chamber seating area would have a chair like that, and then two of the meeting rooms. One of the meeting rooms will have these green chairs, which were the, again, the free chairs through Mike's connection. But the thought is, we'll get eighteen-hundred dollars worth of chairs.
Do you know which chair yet?
Yeah, which one are we looking at?
There's, so, in your packet there?
There's three of them.
There's, well, there's three, now they've added six to eight. They've added some that will go up two inches higher, they've added some for the police that will be three inches wider. The motion was to go through Office Outfitters.
Do they need a wider?
For their guns and...
Sure. For the guns.
No, for the duty belts, sorry. I like my job, so I'll keep it at that.
It's a duty belt.
But that's, that's recommendation would be to go through Office Outfitters and then just make a, an order from there. Again, they were the cheapest to start, and then we get twenty percent off on top of that, so that's, it's a good thing.
No, I'm just curious, 'cause you're recommending to purchase the chairs, but you're not putting a dollar amount. I would've thought you would've come back and just said, these are the chairs you want for X amount of dollars, and make that motion for a dollar amount.
Well, we were just trying to focus in on where we're gonna get them from, so they can get started, and, okay, this is what we need. 'Cause right now, the still, the definition of what we need still hasn't been defined. So, in other words, this is just saying that we're gonna get them from that place at this point.
We could back in April and run through an actual shopping list. Right now, we're looking at about five different vendors.
And what's the ship time on them?
I believe that one is also ten days. Ten days to two weeks, I mean, we've got...
Cutting pretty close. That's why I just thought you would've come back, instead of wasting a month, just say, okay, we want these chairs here.
Waste, yeah.
It is.
I know what you're saying, but...
You're putting it a month out.
Yeah, we, we also have chairs to get by, though, in the event that we have some kind of a leg there. The problem is test-driving chairs and then having everybody, 'cause we had three, and then there were five, and then there were eight, and now there's like a dozen different chairs, is what he's got. They're all still the low quote, but...
You don't need all these options. The more options, you're just gonna confuse yourself. Take the three chairs, take the one you like the most, the one that you think is gonna fit you the best, and move on.
None of them.
But when we go through, when we go through the individuals, so when you start asking people, I'll just take myself, I, I don't really have a, a thought on which one. But if somebody sits in one, but doesn't come up high enough, some of these chairs only go so high, so they had asked Office Outfitters, well, do you have a chair that goes a little higher? Yeah, yeah, we do.
We can't get a variety of chairs.
Do you have a little bit wider? We could.
Six of one, half a dozen of the other kind of a concept, why not? Yeah, and then just say, here.
The other thought that we have, too, is, so if we're going for a council chambers with probably a nicer chair like that around it, until you know what they're gonna sit at, you won't know how tall that piece is before your chairs are begging, you know, if your arm's begging into it, or...
Oh, you just have to...
Right, so you can't even have us start building our bench until you pick a chair.
The chairs shouldn't determine the bench.
What?
The bench is a go, and we...
Yeah. You'll notice, and I'm, I'm not speaking out of turn, I don't think, that's the last definitive motion that was made to come here, and then the rest of them, it was to not have a recommendation and have a vote on some of these other items tonight. On this end, what they were looking at was the office chairs from Office Outfitters, but we don't have, like, one chair we're buying, or necessarily two, because we ran into, for like the police with their duty belt, they preferred that we don't go with one of these three. We get a wider one, for some of the built-in work areas.
It's one of them.
Take your arms off, Brandon. Take your arms off.
Is that one of them?
Those bolt right on.
You look pretty comfy. So, that's a good one?
Well, right.
Well, it's up wider.
It'll be wider.
Okay.
So, we're looking, and when we talked at the tours, the council chambers isn't gonna be ready till May. The third week in May for a meeting. Right now, we have office chairs that we're using, and a lot of them have been handed down, handed down. I think I'm using, or I was using Brandon's old chair that was handed on to him that was thrown away, and then I grabbed it from the old building, but... We have chairs to sit on right now, and if we vote on them in April, when we get around to May, we could get, and still be okay, if that makes sense.
Alright, so...
But if we're only focusing on Office Outfitters, that's what the motion was at, committee.
And it sounds like a great deal.
We could go on and on and on if we're gonna sit and discuss chairs.
Well, that's why I just...
Five thousand different ones.
Go there and pick them up and start moving.
Alright, we got a motion on the floor. Recommend pairs of office chairs from Office Outfitters.
Just a motion, we need a second. There was no second.
I'll second it.
Alright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I post. Thank you.
Alright, next up is discussion, really. Furniture, TVs, lockers. We didn't make any recommendations, because for the furniture, we were still, I think we just...
There's a sheet.
We just wanted to talk about that one. The lockers, uh, Mike was looking for a little more information on what the uses were gonna be from the police department. And then for the, uh, actual table, we were waiting for a second quote, which we do have. Correct?
An additional quote, we had quite a few, but, um, yeah.
They were all cookie cutter stuff, and then we were talking...
Custom wood pieces, we were looking for another one.
We were looking more to compare.
So, you have, essentially, the committee wanted to get action on these items, but in, in some cases, they had either one question that they would like to get answered, and it was a question that was big enough to hold up a recommendation. And so, what they did is they made a motion to push them to council, get the info. You have a sheet at six B five, there's an intro sheet that's got all the items, and I put the question on there, hopefully with an answer. And when we went through the tour at five forty-five, I went off of this sheet, and I pointed out what we were looking at, what the committee looked at. And nobody, you know, obviously, nobody made any decisions over there at all, it was just part of the tour, but I, I think everybody probably has a good idea what we're talking about here. But again, it's metal wardrobe lockers, TVs for the meeting rooms, and for security camera feeds, lobby furniture, which is chairs and end tables, city council chamber seating area, and then kitchen and laundry appliances. The kitchen and laundry appliances, we're gonna hold off till April. So, then we're back to the top four. Now, number one is the metal wardrobe lockers, or the basement locker rooms, it's per the construction spec, so we put it in as an alternate. Immel's quote for lockers on the base contract was like sixteen thousand dollars. Myron and Cardinal were at the ten thousand dollar mark, so the thought at the time was, if we did this on our own, we'd be able to get a better deal. We have two quotes on these wardrobe lockers. One was from Storage System Midwest, which came in right about ninety-four hundred dollars for a seven-foot tall locker. And then the other one was FSS Systems, which had about a seventeen thousand dollar quote. So, with that, Storage System Midwest had a ninety-four hundred dollar quote, they had a seven-foot tall locker. Due to some plumbing and electrical, I don't wanna call it issues, but the locations of where the plumbing and electrical was built, the ceiling in the locker room, which we looked at on the tour, is at about seven foot one inch, and that's generously at seven foot one inch. So, the thought here was, I went to Storage System Midwest, Midwest, say that fast, and I asked them if they could cut off like six inches off top of the seven-foot lockers. And they said what they could do is they could go to a six-foot locker, which would be seventy-two inches. It would leave about a foot of room between the ceiling and the top of the locker. Four men's lockers, five in the men's locker room, four in the women's. Furnished, installed in eight weeks, it would be nine thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars. That's cheaper than what Myron and Cardinal had. And the note that I have on here is that the Finance Committee did not make a recommendation, because they had requested that the police department comment on the needs for the locker room and the feasibility of the lockers as well. And we do have the police chief and sergeant here to comment, if you so desire.
I'll comment, um...
You have a picture of the lockers here, too, in the, in your packet?
Yep.
For both quotes, but do you have a picture what they look like?
I'd like to make a comment on the realistic need on the girls' locker room. Can we add more later, if need be? I mean, would two be sufficient?
We have a female officer right now. We have a female officer.
Yeah, one, we've got four lockers. I mean, what's the realistic that you'd have for, unless each one gets two, I don't know if that's... I'm just, you know, I'm just saying, do you need four lockers, even if you, what's the realistic that you'd have?
I just look at it as if you're outfitting the room, you should outfit the room at one time, otherwise, then you end up with multiple designs, colors, and it just looks like garbage.
So, you don't think that same thing would be available later on?
Well, potentially, potentially not, and so I guess, I would rather look at it as uniformity and keeping it the same, I guess, the way I kinda looked at it. So, I wasn't really too hung up on that, it was just more so, there was a question on what all the uses were, and then do these meet your guys' needs for those uses?
I agree with that, I think that we should do it, if we're gonna do it, get it done and get it done right.
Otherwise, you're gonna have stuff pieced together.
That's because the space allotted gives you four, and so, take all that space.
It's specifically built to be able to contain this in that space. I mean, that's the way the space was designed, to be able to have that, so.
You know, another thing, we keep saying police lockers, but there's no reason why gals that work here might wanna locker downstairs, too, you know? There's other reasons that, you know, there's more than one female working here, and then in the summertime, we've got a couple of them, or more than, one of them up in the park, that, especially the one that's in charge of the pool and everything.
Yeah.
Very likely, you might cheat down here, you know? There's more than, police officers use that locker.
Okay.
The airflow wardrobe locker from FSS is your Cadillac locker system. I've seen these, those were the ones that they had down by Madison, where they're air temperature cooled, the fans moving air through them. They're very, very nice, and...
This is the high quote he's talking about.
That's the high one. The one that we're getting is suitable for what we need, because I've talked to Brandon, and I've talked to Adam, is I fully intend on taking most of the things, and you guys see what we carry around, out of my house, putting it in there. And one example would be, if I go to a car accident, last week I went to it, I got done at the car accident, he was there, I had blood on the front of my shirt. I don't wanna take that into my house. Here, wash it, hang it up, go. Plus all of our equipment that we duty-bag, I mean, these things will be full, and we, we have a use for it. You know, we put, you can put a spare pair of boots, shoes, sock, the whole change-out, that I would rather do here than in my home.
Well, that's the whole idea behind putting a shower room in.
Yeah.
And it's, it's gonna get used, because we do get contaminated and dirty, and you don't wanna take that stuff into your house by your family. And it's, these are suitable lockers, and will work well for what our needs are. For now, and I, anytime in the foreseeable future.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Anybody got any questions on that one?
Do you keep your sidearms in those lockers, too? Do you have a different, uh, security facility for your sidearm?
These have a locking drawer, if you wanted to put one in there, on the inside of the locker.
Okay.
I guess it all depends what they have, do they want it taken back or something, or not?
Yeah.
Well, the basement's key fobbed, anyway, correct?
Uh, at the basement stairs, it will be, yes.
Okay.
And only people going into that area of the basement are gonna be city employees, while we're embedded.
Or people that are escorted by somebody who's been...
Right.
And then, um...
Well, with that, I guess I'll make a motion to approve Storage Systems Midwest quote for ninety-one seventy-five.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made, and seconded, approve the storage system. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried, thank you. Thanks, Keith.
So, the next item, then, after lockers, thank you on that. Now, we're looking at televisions. The initial costs, when we first had the quotes from Heartland back in May twenty-fifteen, they had quoted you professional-grade TVs with very high warranties, very high price tags. I think you're looking at eighty-inch TVs for the community room at eighty-five hundred dollars apiece, two of them. Seventy-inch TVs for the meeting rooms, and I believe those were about forty-five hundred dollars apiece. And then they also had one sixty-inch TV for the police meeting room. That one ran just about two thousand dollars. That's very expensive. The city council had approved the quotes from Heartland, but struck the TVs themselves, so TV wall mounts, they're all included with the Heartland work that'll be done. It's just the TVs themselves that we have to look at. Again, they, they quoted a professional grade, very expensive. Heartland had updated their quotes for commercial grade, uh, which you do have in your packet for a sixty, seventy, eighty-inch TV. They've come down significantly. Instead of the, uh, up to four thousand eighty-five hundred dollars per TV, they're down in the, an eighty-inch Sharp commercial TV, thirty-three hundred dollars, a seventy-inch Sharp commercial TV, seventeen forty-five, and a sixty-inch, one thousand forty-nine ninety-eight. They have, uh, I believe it's three-year warranties on these TVs, if anything goes wrong, it's, it's pretty extensive warranty. But the alternative, which is what the committee had wanted to talk about, was, I believe they termed it an off-the-shelf TV, which would be going to like a Costco or a Sam's. When I researched at Costco and Sam's, and we brought this to the committee, the fifty, fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five-inch TVs, between those two, they're within a dollar of each other on almost every TV. And specifically, I looked at the Vizio brand, which is a little bit cheaper. They have ten eighty P, which is a certain quality, they have four K, which is a higher-end quality, but they're cheaper than what Heartland had been quoting. You do have a couple of handouts there. The first page is a fifty-five inch, it's a kind of an off-brand TCL brand TV for about four hundred dollars at Costco this week. And then you also have the Vizio TVs that are in there, too. And then I believe you have three of the ten eighty P Vizios in your packet, which are six hundred or seven hundred dollars apiece for a sixty-inch TV. The only warning that Heartland had given on the committee recommending an off-the-shelf TV is that if you buy an off-the-shelf TV, all the warranties would be voided, because you're putting it in for a commercial use. I believe the intent of the committee was, if you were not going to buy a commercial TV, and it would go out or, or break, the thought is that they would probably be... the thought is that they would probably be cheap enough to just go buy another TV. And I think I'm speaking in, you know, for the last six months, I think we've talked about that. When we did the walkthrough at the building, what we're probably looking at is TVs in the meeting rooms. Probably a fifty-five inch TV would be okay, fifty or fifty-five. And then in the community room, rather than put two eighty inch TVs at the very front window, the thought is that we could move them to the sidewall. And on the tour, we had marked out two spots along that sidewall to at least have a, either movies or presentations for seniors or any groups that would meet in that room. And then at the rec committee this last month, we had talked about the potential to have a TV that's large enough to have like a movie, instead of a movie downtown or movie in the park, you could have year-round movies that you wouldn't have to worry about the weather, temperature, anything. You could have it in that community room with a tiled floor. With that, I think in general, what we looked at in the tour was that an eighty inch TV might be too big, but maybe sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five might be an appropriate size.
What makes you think eighty is too big?
The price jumps.
It's always sort of, in general, the price between a seventy inch TV and an eighty is like double. An eighty inch TV is like double what a seventy inch TV.
Seventy-five is twenty, twenty-three hundred dollars. An eighty inch for basically what looks to be essentially the same model, but eighty inches, thirty-seven.
Well, that's what it says here, but I don't know if this is a sale price or what's going on.
That's the sales.
It goes as big as you can afford because you're looking at where people have to sit and view that and look around those columns that are in the middle there. You've got prime seating in certain spots.
Chairs shuffle too, depending on.
Go as big as you can afford.
So the TVs in that community room, in general, one of the reasons why we're not voting on the appliances is that we have some more time before the community room is gonna be rolled out, up and ready. Because the moment we move into this building, that next week, we're gonna be tearing up the parking lot and cutting off pretty much all the access to that room. So we're aiming for probably like the first week in June that the committee, community room would be open. With that, here we are in March. A TV you can buy off the shelf, if we're buying them off the shelf, you can go on a day's notice and get them too. So we can wait maybe with a little bit more work on thinking about that room, how big it's gonna be, angles of the room. So maybe the TV size on that end, we could hold off on. But the TVs for the meeting rooms, I think about, you know, fifty, fifty-five inch TV would work. But the other thing is, the week we're moving in is April eighteenth. The April council meeting is gonna be Tuesday night, April nineteenth. So potentially, we could wait until that April nineteenth because we're gonna be moving in that week anyway. Otherwise, if we go out and buy TVs now, the fear I would have off the shelf is that what if there's a sale between now and a month away from when we move? Or if the prices change? I don't know that we're ready to really make a recommendation on what TV to buy because I think specifically, we shouldn't lay it out and say, here's what we'd wanna buy. But in general, does like a fifty-five inch TV for those meeting rooms and something bigger for the community room, does that sound to be, does that sound about right?
How big are those meeting rooms?
They vary.
What's the size on that?
That one's a forty-two inch.
Forty-two?
The meeting rooms are twelve feet to twenty feet long. And they're long, so that you'll have a table, pretty much like this.
Right.
This will fit in the medium meeting room.
Yeah, so if you're doing the.
And then it'll be a longer one. And they'll be, they'll be on the wall behind like some canvas.
If you're sitting at the end of the table, it'd be hard. Wouldn't be that hard. I don't think fifty would be bad though. No, I wouldn't go above a fifty, I don't think.
Is it okay on the TVs we hold out till April? Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Sure.
Moving on, and but you still want to stick with the off-the-shelf? That's still what you'd like to see?
Yeah, that, to me, is the only realistic way to go.
Okay. That sounds good. The next item that we have then, if you don't mind me just working through it, is lobby furniture. We've got chairs and end tables for the lobbies in the corridors. What the finance committee said was, as you look around the room here, we have some of the chairs that we already have. These red ones, we have seven of them. They could use a little bit cleaning up. But there's some thought that we could reuse them in one or two of the lobbies, not have to buy chairs for those, a lobby or two. The committee had recommended, we seek the purchase of this walnut and fabric chair for any chair that we have to buy that's brand new. This is the lowest priced chair from Office Outfitters and also the Websteron Store, which we had bought the community room tables from. Office Outfitters will charge us sixty-three dollars for these chairs, assembled and delivered. Websteron Store charges forty-nine ninety-nine. It's roughly twelve dollars to ship and they come unassembled. So if that's a chair that we'd be looking at, that would be appropriate, we're probably looking at ten of them to fill out the waiting areas or the corridors that we have. We're not looking at the thirty-some that were put on the plans, you know, maybe ten would be enough. If you're looking at that, the quote through Office Outfitters is probably the best because they'll deliver if they're assembled, as opposed to roughly the same price online, not assembled. Sixty-three dollars a chair. They also have two end tables that Office Outfitters had that they tried to match up with this type of chair. Those are also the lowest quote. Again, we had four furniture companies that had given us quotes. They ranged from sixty-three dollars for the chair, sixty-three for an end table, ninety for like a bigger end table. But some of these furniture companies had three, four, or five hundred dollar chairs and end tables. I think the committee's general consensus was, this is a good-looking chair. But what they wanted to clarify was, what's the price between buying it online and Office Outfitters? One question was, Office Outfitters has a twenty percent discount on the office chairs that we talked about? This chair would not qualify for that because it's a different vendor that they deal with. But if you go roughly apples to apples online, you're paying about the same, except it'll be assembled when it's delivered rather than in pieces.
Which is better.
So does that make sense that we would look at?
Yes.
What's lead time on those?
That's also, I believe that's a ten to fifteen day, is what Office Outfitters had. So we're looking at the offices to be opened April twenty-fifth. We don't necessarily need action on it tonight, but.
It would be better if you did.
Well, get it done and get them ordered.
If, if this is what, you know, the question again was, what's the price difference online? And the answer is, it's the same, except they come assembled when you buy it locally.
Well, I'll make a motion that you buy ten of those chairs then from Office Outfitters.
And I'll second it.
Sounds good.
Motion made, seconded. Any more questions?
Do you want it to be ten or do you want it to be not to exceed like fifteen or something like that?
We buy ten and then if we need, there's not a minimum. So if we need more, we can just buy more.
Perfect.
I think.
Did you want not throw all the two end tables on there too?
Yeah. Sure, I mean, you can get one for each lobby then.
There's two enough?
I think so. Now, on the two, you saw the two design differences on your, in your packet, right?
Yep.
They're both like metal with like a wood top on them. It's just different colors, one's a little bit lighter, more of steel color, I think the sixty-three dollar one is. The other thing we can get too is get samples on them or on one of them, because the pictures are pretty small.
Suppose it really doesn't matter, the tables can come later.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Chair's more important.
Okay, any more?
Just the chairs.
Just chairs.
And it's, they call it the walnut and black fabric chairs.
All right, I'll take the vote on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, next I'll make a motion to approve checks three, two.
Well, we do have one more, the city council chamber seating area.
Oh, yeah.
The most important one. I thought we already done that.
So we have, in your packet, you'll see, I don't, I don't know if there's any misinformation about why this held, but we did wait for one extra quote to come in. There were two other companies that were waiting to quote that I just hadn't gotten anything from. One of them was Tuttle Lake Woodworking, which is just west of the valley on Highway ten and seventy-six. They had provided a quote for a custom solid wood piece that would fit eleven people. And what we're looking at is fitting it into a council chambers that's twenty-five feet wide and into an area where when we, if we pulled the curtain, that you'd still have enough room for the public to sit. We had gotten a quote from Backwoods Construction. Locally, you have a rendering of what he was looking at. His quote came in rated at about seventeen thousand dollars and he had about a six-week lead time. The quote from Tuttle Lake Woodworking, you do have a rendering, not a color rendering, but you have an idea what it would be in your packet. He's rated at about eleven thousand dollars. But his, what he put in there would sit thirteen people. You have the ability to cut a ninety-six inch leg off of that table. So maybe instead of thirteen, you can cut it back to about ten people. You can either cut one ninety-six or eight-foot leg off, because it's kind of like a horseshoe. So when we're talking about the legs, we're talking about the end part. You can ninety-six off of one side or you can cut forty-eight inches off each side. Either way, you're cutting ninety-six inches. That would cut his price from eleven thousand twenty dollars. It would cut it like fifteen hundred eighty-four dollars. So you get him down in the ninety-four hundred dollar range. That's, that's the quote that he has. The additional, there's two other quotes for a custom piece. One is, we modeled what we're doing after Little Shoot. And as part of Little Shoot's project, they had a forty-five thousand dollar piece that was done by a company out of Two Rivers. It's a little bit wider and shortening that up for us, we're looking at north of thirty thousand dollars. So that was not pursued at all. But we do have Backwoods at seventeen thousand. Tuttle Lake has the two options, eleven thousand or ninety-four hundred. The third thing that they have, we didn't get an official quote on it, but Tuttle Lake had indicated that they had done the council or the town board seating area for the town of Clayton. And you do have paperwork there. I went to the town of Clayton and took some pictures of what they have. It's cheaper than what the quote would be for a custom piece. But in general, what they have is four modules that you can fit two people at each seating area. It's got a countertop, a short little, I don't want to call it like a front, but like a board that would go on the top, that's removable. And these tables sort of fit into each other where you can turn them around and maneuver them. The way it's set up there, they have it set up for elections. So it's not, the one side looks like there's a hole in it, but it's not necessarily set up for the town board meeting. So I've got three pages of different angles there. I would say that it's not as involved as the other Tuttle Lake quote or the Backwoods quote. But the town of Clayton indicated that they paid somewhere in the neighborhood of about fifty-five hundred dollars three years ago for that. On our end, we'd probably be looking for one more section to add on there. So one more piece that you could interlock if that's something you'd be interested in. And the thought is that that's probably going to be cheaper than the ninety-four hundred dollar setup if you wanted to pursue it.
It's got options that pivot in.
Yeah, I think really what it is, is one, one table shaped with like a rounded edge, the other one sort of has the mouth edge and you can just pick it up and move it.
But can it also pivot?
Yeah, well, the whole, none of that bolted to the ground. So you can move all of it.
It can move different angles, is what I'm looking at. If it can, if it can and needed to, you could put some, maybe you could put some of those runners, you know, those furniture moving things that are round? Maybe you could find one that's a runner where you could just push them, you know, conform with, you know, with ease.
So we have four quotes from the furniture companies on tables that would gang together, connect them together. They, they look like tables gang together, but we have EBI Brothers and Office Outfitters anywhere in the neighborhood of a couple thousand to ten thousand dollars for tables. We've got four different setups that way. So there's four quotes. The other thing we have then is essentially two written quotes from Tuttle Lake or Backwoods. One comment I will make is that when, when I talked to Kyle Toos about the price difference, Kyle had indicated that he felt strongly to tell you that he didn't feel like he was trying to make a lot of money on the piece. He felt like his was more solid and involved. And I'm just relaying the message on that. So what he thought was, wasn't so concerned about being higher than the others. He was more concerned about being seen like he was trying to overbid it. I don't believe that that's the case, but in this case, it's just not the little quote. But within that, with Tuttle Lake, you do have two different types of layouts. One, we have a solid quote on. The other one, we could firm up a quote on if you needed to. Tuttle Lake, if you go with them, had said that they would be about five, six weeks out on building and installing this. That gets us to the week of May sixth, if you make a decision this week. In May sixth then, we would have something installed, hopefully. That next week, Heartland would be in to finish up the wiring with microphones, the controller, a computer data hook-ins for your computers and things like that. And then the third week would be the week of May fifteenth then, is when we would aim to have the first council meeting in that room, in that building.
You know, this, this here is pretty much the same as what we got at Colony.
Yeah, you got, I looked at this, this is number one plywood on there, grade one plywood.
Oh, yeah.
I don't want it in there.
That's exactly what a lot of cabinets are made out of.
They're all finished that way nowadays.
Oh, you've got nine on this one. Is that not enough? Or you could always purchase another section and put it together.
You could, yeah.
Nine is totally enough and, you know, in three years, lumber prices, materials are pretty stable. My guess is it wouldn't go, if you did the nine, it wouldn't be, I would think, that it wouldn't be that much more than what it was.
We actually need ten.
Seven people.
We have to have ten.
And you need one controller seat.
Right.
You know, because there's actually a controller for the system that Heartland's putting in. So that's, that would be eight. Then the thought is, you have your seven and then myself, Becky, the chief, Thad, city attorney. I mean, how many do you want to fit there? We're not gonna fit them all if they all show up, but we'll have some tables you could throw up too.
Yeah, you're right.
Right, I don't know that your attorney, because they're not here that often. Or Thad, for that matter, would need to sit at the table. But the chief definitely does and Becky needs to and you probably should.
So eleven is.
Y'all from the back of the room.
All right, off camera.
So just like this one, it'd be the three and then two sets of two on each side of the three.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it would have been nice to get a quote from you on this one.
Yeah, we get a motion to go with this so we can get it started.
I'd like to make a motion to pursue Tuttle Lake and accept, upgrade, if you will, to eleven seats. Four sections of two and one section of three.
Okay.
So you want to get a price on that?
Depending that the price, how'd you word that? Prices proportional to what? What this, you know, like, if you took the price, how would you say that? Proportional to what this one was? You know, because we're gonna have more seating.
Not to exceed?
Not to exceed, well, if we did the math quick on how many seats you have here and then add, you know, at fifty-five hundred, you have nine. Can someone do the math quick?
Well, here he's got this.
Add two more seats and then up it by maybe ten percent because things might have changed.
Well, the bid here is eleven thousand.
No, for a different one though.
That's for that one.
I'm talking for the, so it's fifty-five hundred for this three years ago.
Yeah.
You had two more seats. First, you got nine, nine seats divided into the fifty-five hundred, if you wanted to do that. That's like six hundred per seat.
Like sixty-eight?
Six, so if you add another two thousand maybe.
With this print then, we're talking.
No.
Six hundred bucks a seat.
No, this one.
Yeah, that's pretty much what this is.
No. Because that's eleven, this is, this was fifty-five hundred. Right, it's basically the same, but it's got more options.
It looks like this is what we want.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one.
So how you gonna do it, Patrick?
Well, the problem is, Tuttle Lake referred me to go check out town of Clayton. And when they turned in their quote, they turned in what's in your packet.
Right.
Fifty-five hundred is a rough cost from three years ago, so.
Right. Things haven't changed that much. Let's say, let's say.
I don't know, I mean, we didn't get a quote on it, so it's hard to know. What you do know is if you went with the other piece, it's either eleven thousand for thirteen people or ninety-four hundred for like ten people.
And that's more stationary, it doesn't have the options, this one does.
Right, but the one thing to look at, not, not to shift either way, but the town of Clayton has one room that works as a community room too. And on our end, we're gonna have a two-story building that's got two rooms. Does that make sense? So the council chambers, it's gonna be carpeted and a little bit nicer. I don't know that we're gonna direct a lot up there that we wouldn't, you know, put down in the community room. The, the good thing about having it movable is that if you get it in there and you feel like it just doesn't work in. The, the good thing about having it movable is that if you get it in there and you feel like it just doesn't work in that room, you could move it. Where if you get something that's bolted in, it doesn't look.
You've got more options, you can make a straight line on this if you wanted it sometime, you could, uh.
Make it square.
When you have more options, and that is a nice design, the way those interlock except, you've got more options.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody likes options.
Yeah, the, the one thing you do know is that it's roughly ninety-four hundred dollars for a setup that he's got. And I guess the question I would have is, what do you think of that price and the setup he has? Because then, on this other, the movable piece, I will tell you, I'm not a builder, so I don't know, I, I would assume that in three years, maybe the price didn't go up.
I am, and I know lumber is the same as it was three years ago.
Went up to two, you know.
I don't think labor's gone up that much either.
I, I don't know, I, I can't argue with you on that, so I don't know.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, take the seating price at nine. Add the same seating price by two more, that was a simple division thing. And add maybe fifteen percent to it or something, and say, can you do it for this? And my guess is, it'll be yes. If you wanna put twenty percent more on there, but then ask him what, cause isn't he working on that quote right now?
Uh, he, his quote that came in was for this other piece.
Right, I know, I know. Am I not being heard right?
Oh, I hear ya.
I thought I was, we're talking about this picture.
We are.
Yeah. Okay.
That's not what his quote was for.
I know. That's why I went through the whole thing at division of fifty-five hundred.
For quotes, I said, here's what we're looking at, here's the room. And he said, you should check out the town of Clayton, cause I did that.
Right.
So we did.
Right.
But when it came time to say, here's your price, he didn't quote that other one, he quoted.
He's quoting the one that we have here.
Exactly. Exactly, and maybe.
He said he could do it, and the number tossed out was fifty-five hundred dollars three years ago.
Exactly, now, listen one more time.
Oh, no, I gotcha.
One more time, take nine seats at fifty-five hundred or six hundred bucks a piece, add two. What do you get? Quick, anyone? Quick. Twelve hundred bucks more. Now, add a certain percentage above that lumber, and labor has not changed much in three years. Add fifteen percent, even twenty, once his quote comes in. If it's even more than the fifty, just say, can you do it for this? My guess is not gonna be, my guess is it's gonna be about seventy-five to seventy-eight hundred dollars. That's a guess. If this was fifty-five three years ago, add two seats, you done the math already. So, that's where I'm at.
I, I follow you the whole way on that. The concern I have is, so we asked for quotes, and we got written quotes. And Tuttle Lake said, we could do this, we've done this. But Backwoods, or Voyager, or some of the other companies, if we said, hey, could you go build something for X?
Right.
That's my concern, now, it's.
Well, I thought when we were up there, and we really liked, we were talking about this when we were upstairs, and it seemed like, hey, this is the way to go.
But we don't have the price today for it, though. Bruce, I'm not, I'm not arguing with that.
Okay, listen, listen, hey.
I'm listening, I'm listening.
No, you're not. Cause the division thing, math doesn't lie, does it? Three years doesn't change that much. If you don't wanna take my approval for, uh, uh, thirty years on this, if you don't wanna think that I don't know in three years what's changed, I don't wanna be personal about this, I wanna move on.
No, no, I don't think we're personal.
But, are we deciding on which one tonight?
Yes. And you, you asked me to get quotes, and I turned them in to you, and.
But this was Johnny come lately, this was Johnny come lately.
No, because he told me a week ago.
This wasn't in the packet.
Because I didn't get a quote on it.
Exactly, exactly.
Right.
But that seems to be a very, unless, everybody else, go ahead. Vote on, uh, vote on his other options, that's fine too. It's just more stationary, right?
Same thing. They're all hinged together. I guess that's.
I thought maybe those were hinged together too.
No, those, that's a solid unit, from what I see. The solid one is a solid unit. So structurally, he's gonna be there.
Then go back and get a quote for a movable unit, then.
Well, what are you gonna use that room for?
Just council, right?
Just council, and, and court, correct? You're gonna have your, your TV is gonna be mounted at one spot, probably not gonna be movable.
It's a screen over there.
Screen's gonna be in one spot.
One spot, it's not movable. You have a room setup. Once you set this, I don't know that you're ever gonna move it.
I don't, I can't ever see us moving it either.
It's, it's a council chamber. Therefore, I would just go with the, uh, with the one we have, with the bid we have right here.
Yeah, just so.
Yeah. That's what I would go with.
That's what I prefer.
Okay, now, take a look at the design, though, and it's not bad. Look where he's got angled dividers, it's gonna be right where somebody's sitting, right between their legs. Did you notice that? That could be you.
Really? The one, the one that he's got drawn out there, there's what, eight spots?
Whereas these other ones are full back, they're full, and there's no dividers in between, because he's designed them to be full, all the way down supportive, which is stronger. Plus removable, plus you don't have that right near your crotch. So you decide.
I don't see it that way at all.
Well, I do, because look at the spaces on there.
I'm looking at it.
Okay. How many people sit on this eight-foot section?
Those are actually bigger than what we got at Cordos, and the Cordos ones are big, just like that.
How many people sit on this orange section, two or three?
Two.
Two.
And how many sit here?
Well, you get, you get three.
Five, six, seven, eight, eight people on that whole thing. So that ain't right.
So there's three people in that section, and one's getting the crotch support.
Exactly, do the math, look at it.
I see what you're saying.
You see it, don't you?
I do now, well.
Yeah.
At ninety-six inches.
Think about it.
But if you cut it down to forty-eight, though.
I think that main table is supposed to have two people on, or, yeah, two, 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 three, three.
We need eleven, right?
Uh, we, we need eight, and you could go up to eleven.
And you said that one fit eleven, and that's what we need, just look where people sit. And maybe that angle bracket's fine, right where it is, but I'll choose to sit, well, I won't be here, so it, it don't matter. Everyone wants to sit on that, bump their knees on it.
But here's a support, right here, that you're looking at, it doesn't come all the way down.
Oh, I know it doesn't, I've done those before. Now, just sit there, bumping your knees, cause you will.
I don't know, but I think it's gonna be hard to pull on something, and you got a lot of confusion.
Yeah, we, we just got total confusion here.
It is. I think, I think I'm gonna make a recommendation and go back to the committee. I know it's gonna hold it up, but we got bids that, that we could get more bids for.
Don't you get a special, uh?
We don't, we don't know what we want, do we want eight spots, do we want ten spots, do we want eleven spots? Maybe he's made decisions.
Can we decide that? How many spots we want?
We spent over forty-five minutes listening to everybody talk here, and.
Can we at least decide how many spots we want, so at least that way we know going to committee what we gotta get, yeah?
I think that committee can handle, handle that.
You don't have to wait till next month on a committee meeting, you can have a special call-in camp to get this thing.
I've seen some meetings from everything from A to Z, so why not? Go to a committee, but then it could get shot down the same way it would get shot down here.
You'll be able to be getting a price on this shortly.
Ten or eleven?
Well, good, yeah.
Exactly, so have a special meeting as soon as possible.
But, but you understand, my concern tonight, though, is that I don't have a price on that. I'm, I'm with you all the way, and everything is said.
And I think the clerk, she's gonna take minutes.
I know, that's why I said, as soon as you do, get a special meeting.
You'd have the mayor, the clerk.
You have that laid out here, you put a table right in the front, and they speak directly at you. And that's, that's where anybody else, public work, chief, any police, whatever, they would come there. So, to me, that would be, it's a chamber area for the council.
We're confusing each other here, with this is just a sample of what his work is, this is a quote of what he wants to do for us. We like his sample, we think it's impressive, it looks good, but it's not exactly what we want. This is a quote of what he quoted, what he'll do for us, at eleven thousand dollars.
And the, so the eleven thousand, what you're looking at there, Mike, the ninety-six inch sections will fit three people. You'd have three on each side, when you're working from the bottom up, three on each side, two each on those angled sides, that gets you to ten. And two or three on the top, that's twelve to thirteen. So if you cut forty-eight inches off of each side, you can cut down to.
No, see, I'm not, I'm not.
You're just confusing the issue more and more and more.
I'm not even looking at that, it's like that, I'm looking at this, then, I'm not even looking at the dimensions. I'm looking at each one of these bays as a person.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah, eight.
And, and as far as I'm concerned, with the horseshoe in the center, put another spot right dead center in the middle of that. You got the mayor on one side, you got the administrator on the other side, and the clerk taking minutes, right in the, in the center of that. Then you got three council people on one side, three council people on the other side.
Agreed.
And I'm fine with that, just tell him, make it so that there's, the way they sit, there's not.
So in other words, in this area here, make sure, for Bruce's sake, there isn't a.
Now, listen, it's simple, he can, it's just an initial design, just make it so, you've got your, your cubby, and it's individual.
Or, yeah, split it out.
He can put, he can put one more additional divider and slide it the other way, and it's gonna be happy for everybody.
You see the width on that, Bruce? Twenty-four inches, it doesn't have to be that wide. That countertop doesn't have to be twenty-four.
You need it, instead of the one, just have it so you can get it.
Two feet.
Two feet, you do.
You need that.
And, I think so.
Oh, yeah.
Clerk can sit in the middle.
If you're, if you got.
Mayor on, administrator on both sides.
Thirty inches, I think.
Yeah, I don't think you'd want any less than twenty-four inches.
Oh, that's, you need that.
Do you wanna?
That's it.
So not have that rounded thing, you just have a straight U then?
No, 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 so just like it is, but instead of this in the middle.
Right.
Two of them.
Yeah, you just.
If you were gonna, you were gonna do this, you just cut this right here, right in the middle, take that out.
Hmm?
Put yourself another stall here and another one here, so you got a stall right in the middle.
And just adjust the support so they accommodate your seating, that's as simple as it is.
Okay, yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah.
He's, he's a builder, capa guy, he knows how to move things.
A few inches one way or another.
And the price shouldn't really change.
That's gonna, well.
Yeah.
Minor, it'd just be a little more wood.
Right.
One more support, I can't imagine it costs that much.
No.
All right, where are we at? We've got absolutely nowhere here.
So are we?
Oh, I think we have gotten somewhere, uh, Jack, I think we've gotten somewhere fine, it takes a lot to get somewhere. And sure, I don't wanna be any longer to this important.
It is.
So I ain't gonna listen to that, I, I think it's important. With all due respect. And then, so, let's move on.
So.
Hey, I'm not walking out.
No, I mean, what, we can't.
Let's go.
We haven't made a bid yet.
I think what Mike was suggesting was a good thought.
He had another idea, he had one idea, now we got another one on the floor.
No, I think Mike kinda ties the two together, and makes it work. It's still the same design, it's just expanded a little bit. It's just solid and a slight adjustment. Yeah.
So we approve this vendor, we're not necessarily approving this design, we're approving the builder of it, and we're going forward.
Correct.
Yep.
So let's just go with that and be done with it and move on. What do you guys think?
I'm good with that.
That's where we're at, right?
Okay. Nick, what did you make a motion for, those?
We didn't make, I didn't make a motion. I, I was just stating.
Yeah, so the concern I have, and the reason why we asked about an alternate to cut space off, is that this thing is huge. So what you're looking at will fit thirteen people around it, and it's gonna take up two-thirds of the council chambers, if you have the curtain shut. So the reason why I asked if you could cut back, you, number one, you can cut like sixteen hundred dollars off of it. And then you can also clear up two feet.
Right.
And still fit probably ten to eleven people on there. So the question is, how do you want the layout to go?
Where you could do it.
With people, because if, it'll fit thirteen, and if you just reconfigure the seating to fit nine or ten, well, then you're just putting them further apart from each other. So like, on these angled sections, you have a seventy-eight inch section with one person on it. And that's at least this table. So it's hard to look at that, because it's, it's a piece of paper. But what's seventy-eight inches is seven feet, six feet, six and a half feet? So you have one person sitting at a section of desk that's six and a half feet wide. And the reason why there's an alternate is because you can cut that down, not have wasted space, and still save like sixteen hundred dollars. Now, I understand that there's confusion that is brought by me a little bit, but what happened was Tut- Tuttle Lake said, here, I can do the town of Clayton. So we got pictures and everything for it, and then when the quote came in, it wasn't what they told us to go look at. So that's where there's some confusion there on my end, and I apologize. The problem I have is, he, he only gave one quote for one layout, and then said, well, if you wanna cut sections off, then I'll cut some price off too. From that, now, on my end, I, if you guys feel good enough about doing whatever you wanna do, you can do whatever you feel is appropriate. But on my end, you know, we got quotes for tables, my sense is that you wanna cut that out and not have just tables ganged, is that correct?
Right.
And then you wanna look at like a solid piece, or some kind of a piece that can move.
I'd rather see.
And you could go a, a lot of different ways.
Real quick, real quick comment, I thought, I didn't realize you looked at this before his quote came in. I thought that came in, and then you went out, and you said, go look at this also. See, that makes a big difference in my approach, too.
I apologize, so I got those pictures last week Wednesday, his quote came in on Friday.
Yeah, now I'm, okay, so now what?
So he'd said, hey, I can do this, but then quoted something different, so I, but what he quoted was, he was trying to match up with what Backwoods was quoting them to. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it does. I'm just, the more I think about it, it's just, I like what Mike said. I understand that six feet's a lot of frickin' space for one person to be sitting at, do we need it that damn big? Can we just have it redesigned for eight spots?
And you don't, you don't have to vote on it, like, it's just.
He said we need, said we need eleven, I thought.
Can we vote just to go with that vendor, and you go back and get a hard quote, so that we?
Get a special committee meeting? Yeah.
Oh, I really need nine spots.
I'd like to make a motion to go with that vendor, and work the details out in a special committee meeting shortly. Can I have a second?
And what's wrong with Backwoods designing, speaking to the whole council, you don't want him sitting off to the side.
Pretty expensive.
No.
You get the side table, you're speaking to the whole council.
Right, if you get the other ones on the side.
We have a motion on the floor.
I got a motion, we got a second?
You had a motion way before all this.
What was the motion even for?
He originally did a motion.
What is it, read it.
Did he get a second?
No seconds, it failed without a second.
It failed without a second, cause we've already forgot what it was.
Can you read the motion?
Uh, to pursue the Turtle Lake with an upgrade to eleven seats.
That was with the picture.
Oh, forget that, cause I did not understand that this was, the cycle of it, I did not understand.
I apologize, Bruce.
Yeah.
If no second, then we can make that fail.
That's failed.
Fail.
Fail. Now, what's your new motion? Go with Tuttle Lake?
I'd like to make a motion to go with, um, Tuttle Lake vendor, um, and the details to work out with a solid price, you know, with a solid quote. And a special committee meeting to approve, or to recommend.
How many?
Can somebody write that up?
Seating?
Well, why can't we just agree on this one here? Cause Patrick already says it seats thirteen the way it is, and if we were to take those, that ninety-six, and just do half on each end, it would get us to where we need for, to fit every council person on there, plus the chief. Becky and Patrick on it, and call it a day. Cause it's exactly what we need, and we're saying we're not putting.
Yeah, and I think she's clarifying it for my thinking, too, if you wanna make that motion.
Because if we need the judge there, or if we need to have the, our lawyer, they can sit off to the side. But it's important to have the main people that are in our city sitting up at that table, and not off to the side, or in the middle, or whatever, we should all be unified to one. So I'm making a motion to go with this one that the Tuttle people have, cutting off forty-six inches on each side, so we have exactly what we need for our council, and that's how I'm ending it.
I'll second that.
So, what's your, taking a motion on then is the eleven thousand twenty dollars minus fifteen eighty-four?
Yes.
I'm speaking in general terms, but trying to get a number on what that actually is, so you can put an amount down in your motion then.
Would you like an amount down in your motion, then you go for it, I'll put it on there.
You got this all right, Becky.
We've got a camera.
Do the best you can.
Thankfully, thankfully.
See, I don't think anybody's got it.
Put it in your own words.
She's got her hand on her head, is she?
All right, we got a motion and a second, finally.
We have a motion to go with the Turtle Lake design, but cutting off forty-eight inches on each side, to keep it uniform.
That makes sense, thank you.
Which, which will seat eleven people, correct?
Nine, nine thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars.
What Patrick said.
That's what you got ruled on there.
Did I write it on your packet?
Yeah, it's on the packet, that's why you don't.
Yeah. You guys reading the packets like I'm not apparently, or?
Yeah.
I'll say, apparently I'm not. Yeah, you're right.
Any more questions?
Now, let's just walk quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, get this.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Post.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Oh, you did, I didn't, yeah, yeah, sorry.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, go one more thing.
Now, now make a motion.
If I answer again, we're gonna hold, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Get up.
Okay, now I'll make a motion to approve checks, three, two, zero, seven, two, three, three, two, one, five, six, totaling one million three hundred fifty-four thousand six hundred thirteen dollars and forty-one cents.
I'll second.
Any fails?
Motion made and seconded to approve the checks. Any questions? Roll call.
Appleby?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Nadowski?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Kemp?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, now we got the long part here. Please some fire. Mike?
Don't have time. Nothing.
Public health, shady, nothing. Recreation.
No action for council.
Public property.
No action for council, thank you.
Well, that's, that's supposed to be a little quicker, doesn't it? Planning commission, there is no action for council. Uh, new business, consider operator's license for Tracy Harris.
Make a motion to approve the operator license for Tracy Harris.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the license for Tracy Harris, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consider resolution fifty-seven A, resolution for election inspectors, so if you all read that.
Yep. Make a motion to approve resolution five-seven-nine.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded, approve resolution five-seven-nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Post.
I'll abstain.
Okay, motion carried, thank you.
Did you say that?
Consider temporary B license for vintage pipes and stripes, that's a thing gonna happen up at the fairgrounds on June tenth to eleventh. Uh, temporary license. No motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve temporary license for vintage pipes and stripes on the June tenth and eleventh at the fairgrounds.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, approve the class builder license, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Motion carried. Number eight, mayor's report. I basically been spending a lot of time running around trying to get stuff lined up for the new city hall, basically the kitchen, and we got some help out of Shanny here to help me out, we've got a lot of questions yet, I guess, on whether, how the kitchen's gonna be used and how we're gonna make it legal so it can be used the way we want it to be used. Other than that, I've got nothing. Patrick?
Had, uh, the software, financial software, uh, we have all the pieces up and running, the last piece that we have to run is, to run some checks uh, through APs, we have payroll, utility billing, that's all running through, uh, we had our audit the first week in March, and so that's what we were waiting for, is to close out twenty fifteen before we could close the book on the fund balance software, which we've talked about the headaches over the last couple of years. That's a very good thing, our auditors are happy that we're moving on to a new software, so that should be good. Construction on the treatment plant is moving along, uh, they're aiming for, uh, within the next month and a half, the construction should be good, all, all done, and then in June, they're gonna be doing their final landscaping and punch lists. City hall construction, as you saw tonight, is, is progressing, and now, week by week, and even day by day, it's, it's moving along pretty quickly towards the end. Um, the word we got was a good word from Emil, that they're thinking they're about a week ahead, maybe even two weeks ahead, that they could probably pick up and move out of the parking lot uh, by April fourteenth, fifteenth. Initially, when we first started, we were aiming at May eighth, and then we've started to move that back a little bit. Um, the carpeting and the final flooring should be in April eleventh and twelfth, maybe even the thirteenth, um, and then starting the week of April eighteenth, we should be able to shut down here, or mostly shut down, we could probably still have some counter traffic if we needed, and start moving in. Uh, so the week of April eighteenth is gonna be a pretty big week, uh, we'll be moving the offices in. The week of April twenty-fifth is tentatively the start of when we would clear out the parking lot back here, and there's about a three-week window from when we close down the parking lot to when the pavement and asphalt should be complete. So we're looking at that, um, once the pavement is, is complete, there'll be some waiting time, we're not gonna have marked stalls for a little bit of time because we need to let that settle before we paint. We're hoping that's not that big of a deal in the back here, but we'll, we'll keep an eye on that. Uh, but in general, we're looking at by mid-May, end of May, we should be completely done with the construction, Emil should be all punched out, checked out, and the parking lot should be complete, the community room then, as we kinda referenced before, we're aiming for like the first week in June that we can have that open, and open to the public for rentals and things like that. Uh, but then, what we do have to take a look at is something of like a ribbon cutting, or some kind of a ceremony at these projects, and what we would like to do is aim for like either the second week of June, or maybe even the third week when you meet with city council, uh, but we should probably get that lined up pretty quickly, because I know we're talking with Brandon and the chief, um, once you start to invite like maybe the attorney general, um, the governor, lieutenant governor, I mean, you can get invites out to these people, congressmen, representatives, usually they wanna know about two months out, at least. Um, so, we're aiming for probably the second week of June, maybe the third week, uh, but the moving is going to kick up here pretty quickly in the next three weeks here, so. Other than that, I, a lot of action tonight, a lot of discussion tonight, I appreciate that, and, you know, we're getting to the end on a lot of important things, so it's, it's, makes sense that we're at where we're at, and we've had a lot of long meetings, so I, I do appreciate everybody's time over the last few months, it's been productive, so that's good. And that's all I've got.
Chief? Uh, just a couple of things, we have, uh, we're gonna take advantage of the new building, um, starting on May sixteenth, Canadian National, of all people, is gonna be coming in with a couple of special agents and teaching a grade crash investigation school, which is specifically for automobile accidents that involve train. And probably more important and more exciting for us is the assistant attorney general is gonna be coming on May twenty-sixth to do a legal update, so everybody's very fond of the guy who's coming, and, uh, he's good, but instead of sending our eight people down to the tech, get eighty dollars a pop, plus travel time, he's coming here for free. So, we're gonna try and do more of that, moving forward, um, hopefully on an annual basis, for some of it, and use our facility, and not the one chairs. That's it.
Thanks, Keith. All right, set the meetings for calendar for April.
Finance and public works have already been set.
April eleventh?
No, April eleventh. Uh, remember, council is set back to, or, I should say, pushed back to Tuesday versus Monday, so it'd be April nineteenth, this council.
That's when we have the, the first meeting closes out the business of this council, and the second meeting would be the organizational meeting of the new council.
Um, we need to schedule an ordinance?
Do what?
Yep, I do, what works for you guys? You're not right in the beginning and get it over with, Nick?
Sure.
Wait, does, um, the sixth work for you, Wednesday? Keith, does that work for you?
Sure.
What time?
Six.
Six?
Sure.
Okay, six o'clock on Wednesday the sixth? No?
Sixth and seventh isn't good for me, but I could, I could submit a written report too, if you need that, that should be fine.
Okay, well, let's do that then, so we'll do this.
I'll make it, I'll see if I can make it work.
Okay.
Are you doing police, too?
Yeah, one of the records.
Either the fifth or the twelfth, whichever one you want.
Makes no difference to me.
No difference to you? Fifth, okay, rec and then, uh, police on the fifth, starting at six.
Got him? Uh, such other matters, it's authorized by law, there's nothing that I know of.
Well, just, uh, I'd like to apologize for not understanding, which took me on a whole nother way of thinking, along with, yes, we wants to share it, my, my, I said, if I melt down, it ain't pretty, I'm diabetic number two, and and, uh, I melted, so with misunderstanding, I hope you apologize, I apologize, I do apologize.
That's fine, we like arguments. I'll take a motion, go on to closed session.
Make a motion, we go on to closed session?
I'll second it.
Probably wanna read out real quick, you want me to read it?
You can read it.
Kat, yeah, I know how to read, so that's a good thing. Uh, closed session pursuant to nineteen eighty-five one.
You picked an interesting one.
Wisconsin state conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who's rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Reason for the closed session is to discuss a general contractor claim related to the municipal building project construction, to discuss ordinances regarding the railroad, and to discuss building code enforcement issues for specific properties. Council may choose to reconvene open session at the conclusion of the closed session in order to take actions on items from the closed session. And just a quick note, we have action on the municipal building project claim, if it is needed. On any of those items, if there's action, we can come out in open session though.
Okay.
Okay? Sounds good. Do you have a motion in a second?
Yes, we do. We got a motion. Roll call.
Uh, Appleby?
Aye.
Nados, or Nadowski?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Kemp?
Aye.
And it is eight twenty-six. Okay, we're back in open session? And the next item we have on the agenda then is I have a second page. Uh, action on municipal building project claim, it's an if necessary, because we're in open session, that's, seems to be necessary.
All right. And on that, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the municipal building project claim for forty thousand dollars.
It's settlement on the claim, right?
A settlement on the claim, yes, correct.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to settle the claim on the municipal building for forty thousand dollars. Wanna roll call or?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Appleby?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Nadowski?
Aye.
Kemp?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you.